Good morning. This virtual public hearing conducted by the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities and the Arts is called to order at 9:00 a.m. Notice of the hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets on December 9th of 2021, with the second notice provided on December 14th of 2021. Notice of the hearing was also made known on the Guam Legislature's website. This morning, the committee will hear testimony on the appointment of Mr. Michael A. Pangolinan as a member of the Public Utilities Commission. Upon conclusion of Mr. Pangolinan's confirmation hearing, we'll take a five-minute recess before we hear testimony on the appointment of Mr. Al Edrich Lebang as a youth member to the Board of Directors of the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency. Before we proceed with hearing testimonies, I'd like to provide the panel participants with some general rules of conduct for this virtual public hearing. All participants must abide by the rules of conduct and quality assurance standards, including: The chair will invite individuals who have signed up to testify. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and shall state their name, title, and organization for record purposes. Please ensure that you are unmuted and that you are speaking clearly into your microphone. For group settings where more than one individual is present, please state your name before providing comment. From among the panel of senators, each member will be allowed to pose one question to an individual testifying for one round and be provided another round if necessary. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violations of this rule of conduct will result in removal from the meeting by the room host. I would now like to welcome my colleagues who have joined us this morning, Senator Tony Ada and Senator Telo Titegwe. Thank you for joining us, and good morning. We'll now proceed with discussions on the appointment of Mr. Michael A. Pangolinan as a member of the Public Utilities Commission, and we'll begin by hearing testimony from those who have joined us today, and I'll call on participants based on the order of how they signed in. So first on the sign-in sheet this morning is Mr. Fred Horecki.
Thank you, Chairman Rigel, Senators Ada and Titegwe. My name is Fred Horecki. I'm the chief administrative law judge for the Guam Public Utilities Commission. A written testimony has been submitted by our chairman, Jeff Johnson, so I will be presenting his testimony this morning. Chairman Johnson is strongly in support of the confirmation of Mike Pangolinan to another term with the Guam Public Utilities Commission. It should first be pointed out that Mr. Pangolinan has previously already served two terms, and those are six-year terms for the members of the PUC. So he is a very experienced member. He is entirely familiar with the procedures and the workings of the Public Utilities Commission. So certainly, it greatly assists the commission to continue to have someone of his great experience to serve with the commission. Chairman Johnson has characterized Mr. Pangolinan as a very dedicated and hard-working member of the commission, who has faithfully attended the commission meetings and also participated in training and workshops. Mike brings particular skills, of course, as an attorney, and many of the functions that the PUC undertakes are the review of contracts, that is, larger contracts of the utilities. There's usually a dollar amount involved. For a GPA, the PUC reviews any contract in excess of 1.5 million. For the Port Authority, it's 1 million. For GWA, it's 1 million. In those reviews, it is inevitable that procurement issues come up. Now, the PUC is not per se a procurement board, but normally, the PUC in reviewing these contracts at least tries to make sure on a facial basis that the procurement procedures were followed. And that is an area that Commissioner Pangolinan is extremely strong in, is very familiar with all the procedures for procurement of the government, as well as all the particular rules and procedures that bind the government, such as open government law, Sunshine Law. So he has always been very helpful in analyzing contracts, another skill of an attorney, and that is something that's very important for the contract review. So he has contributed greatly to the contract review process of the commission. He also has brought that same insight and observation into the commission's procurements, and always to make sure that the letter of the law is followed, and that is a very helpful, necessary perspective for, I guess you'd say, a quasi-judicial body such as the PUC to have. He has also brought a lot of common sense perspectives to the commission. On bond matters, for example, I know he's asked on a number of occasions about the expenditure of bond funds, because one thing that happens with the utilities, they will issue bonds, but it takes quite a while normally to expend those bond funds. So he's on occasion questioned, you know, how are they really always necessary if the expenditures aren't being made? Chairman Johnson has pointed out a particular instance recently where Commissioner Pangolinan was very helpful for the commission. And I think Commissioner Pangolinan is what the chairman would call a voice of moderation. He's always able to look at an issue, to work on a common sense solution, and to gain some support with the commissioners. And this was most recently evident with regard to the levelized energy adjustment clause increases. Now, nobody likes increases, right? That's the fact. But sometimes, when the fuel prices go up, the commission has no choice. And that was recently the case, last year, at the end of July, when the LEAC rate was adjusted. And Commissioner Pangolinan was instrumental in advocating a three-step increase so that the ratepayers would not be unduly burdened all at once, and crafted a solution or an emotion that led to the adoption of a more moderated rate increase. So at least the ratepayers had some relief from what was an unfortunate but necessary situation. And Commissioner Pangolinan has often served that role, a voice of moderation and a voice of reason. He has always undertaken his PUC duties in a dedicated manner. He's worked diligently as a commissioner. And his reappointment will, I believe, really be essential to having a strong, hard-working PUC. And for that reason, Chairman Johnson is extremely strong in his support of the confirmation of Commissioner Pangolinan. And again, his reappointment is really essential to ensure that the commission works effectively and continues to carry out its regulatory responsibilities. Finally, Dr. Johnson urges that the committee members all support the confirmation of Commissioner Pangolinan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horecki, for your testimony. Next will be the nominee himself, Mr. Pangolinan. You may begin, Mr. Pangolinan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Chairman Rigel, Senator Titegwe, Senator Ada. It's always an honor to appear before the Guam Legislature. I'm here this morning to request that I once again be allowed to continue serving as a member of the Guam Public Utilities Commission. I was originally appointed by Governor Felix Camacho in 2008, and this is now my third nomination for reappointment. I'd like to express my sincere thanks to Governor Leon Guerrero for reappointing me. I'm no longer a rookie on the commission, that's for sure, but I'm always learning more and more about utility rate regulation. I hope you will continue to allow me to serve our island as a PUC commissioner. It's difficult being a PUC commissioner. There's a lot of technical material to digest and process, and it's particularly difficult for those of us who do not have an engineering background. It can be quite time-consuming, tedious, and the decisions we make as a commission often upset people. Sometimes our decisions result in rate increases. Island residents and businesses are never happy about that. Sometimes we deny rate increases or deny funding requests from the utilities, which can be frustrating to them. But even though it can be difficult and unpleasant at times, I feel privileged to serve on the PUC and proud of the work that we do. The PUC serves an important public function in reviewing utility rates and charges. We also review contracts between the utilities and their vendors and service providers. And issues that come before us affect the lives of Guam's residents and businesses. It's humbling to be entrusted with that kind of responsibility, and that's a feeling I'm sure all of you good senators know very well. So it's been an honor to serve on the PUC, but it's even more of an honor to be asked to continue to serve. We have a very skilled and dedicated support team at the PUC, especially our chief ALJ Fred Horecki, and our ALJs Joseph Joe Fettal, Contra, and Anthony Camacho. They guide us through the technical material we must attempt to digest in order to make our decisions on matters brought before us. We have a hard-working administrator, Ms. Lou Palomo, and the new assistant administrator, Cynthia Brown, prepare our meeting materials and manage the PUC's daily operations. We also have an amazing chairman, Dr. Jeff Johnson. And it's been my real pleasure to work with our two new commissioners, Pedro Guerrero and, of course, Doris Flores-Brooks, who bring a wealth of experience and technical expertise to the commission. I also want to say that I appreciate the active role that you have taken, Chairman Rigel, providing input to the PUC regarding issues of concern to the people of Guam and monitoring how the PUC has operated during your term as chairman of this committee. Your input and oversight has caused us to step up our game and has improved our performance as a commission. I welcome your continued input and oversight. With the help of our supportive team and some very experienced commissioners, I promise to continue to do my very best to contribute to the function we perform as a commission, especially in areas where I'm able to put my own educational background to use. My background is law, not engineering, but I will continue to look for opportunities to develop my technical knowledge so I can continue to serve effectively if you decide to approve my renomination. I again thank Governor Leon Guerrero for this renewed opportunity. I thank Chairman Rigel for quickly scheduling this hearing, and I thank all of you senators, both of you senators, for also being here this morning. It's an honor and a privilege to be once again asked to serve. If you decide to allow me to continue to serve as a PUC commissioner, I will do my very best to serve you well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pangolinan. Allow me to recognize at this time Senator Joan Brown, who's joined us as well. We'll begin the question and comment portion for my colleagues. And I know in the beginning, as I read the rules, initially, the rules said for one question per round, but since there's only a few of us here this morning, I'll go ahead and allow you to just ask all of your questions from the first round so we can complete this hearing. Senator Ada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning again, Mr. Pangolinan, Attorney Pangolinan, and thank you for, once again, you know, stepping up to the plate and answering the call to Governor Leon Guerrero's, you know, nomination for the member on the PUC. It's a long time, and I think Fred said it best, you know? And both of you said it best, that you guys learn to grow, and decisions are not made easily, and it takes a lot of going back and forth, and, you know, with the utility agencies and as well with the general public, and I think that's one of the commissions that is one of the most difficult, you know? There's, you can't please everyone. But, you know, I thank you for all the effort and time that you put into the commission, and, you know, especially you being very busy to begin with, you know, and being an attorney and all, and it's just amazing how you can balance the time to handle both, and the work that you do doesn't go unnoticed. And I think that goes as well for the media. They, you know, they don't let a day go by when the PUC comes out with one decision or the other. But, you know, thank you guys for all the effort and work that you put into it. And, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions. I just look forward to voting on his nomination and getting him reconfirmed to the board once again. Thank you, sir, Mr. Pangolinan. Thank you again for your time and your efforts that you put onto the board, and you have my support and my vote for your nomination again.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada. Very much appreciated.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Senator Titegwe, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning. Good morning, Fred. Thank you for your testimony and being here today, as always. You've been the pillar of PUC in providing information and doing your due diligence as well. I want to thank you as well, Mr. Horecki, for all the work you're doing at PUC. You're always there. Thank you. Mike, we've known each other for a long time in a different capacity as musicians, you know? And this is your third term. Twelve years already sitting on PUC, that's quite a long time. And I'm not sure if you plan on doing it a fourth time, but I know that the experience that you have is going to be very helpful. The institutional knowledge is something that's lacking in so many areas. I'm sure you bring that as well as Mr. Horecki, who's been there. Any kind of history report, I just have to ask him, and he's like an encyclopedia. But, of course, it needs people like you on the board, who, I believe, I know you've spoken to each other. You have a great disposition. I think you're very level-headed, especially if you get people coming to the PUC with complaints about GPA or GWA, especially if they receive a bill, like a water bill, that's astronomical, you know? Next thing you know, they've been trying to fight with Waterworks to say, "No, there's no leak on our side. There's nothing been, you know, an issue on our side, and why are you guys billing me this amount without, you know, somebody there to make sure that I'm there when you're doing inspections?" Things like that. I'm sure it comes your way. And as an attorney, it's very helpful to hear both sides of the story, you know? I mean, the next step in your profession is to be a judge, so it's important to have your experience and background. But because you're a very popular law firm, has there been any conflict of interest at all where you had to step aside on issues when it comes to PUC?
Thank you, Senator Titegwe, for that question, and also thank you for the active role that you also played in PUC matters. We know that you've paid a special attention to a lot of the functioning and the operations of the PUC and the utilities, and we appreciate that as well. That's an excellent question, and that's one of the most challenging aspects of kind of having an attorney on the commission, because we have a great team of lawyers that provides advice to us, like Fred and Joe Fett and Tony. But as a PUC commissioner, you know, I have to constantly avoid any conflicts of interest. And so what I've always done is that any time I have a client, and once in a while, it does arise where a client of mine comes before the PUC, usually not, because most of my clients are private sector and not, you know, utility agencies, but I have a few telecom clients, because the PUC has oversight of telecom companies, and in the, and once in a while, I'll have a client that will file a petition. And every time that happens, I recuse myself and don't participate in the matter. And I also don't advise the client in the matter that they're pursuing that might become before the PUC. One particular example recently, though, that, you know, is kind of a, is one that a lot of people know about, is the Kepco Power Plant. That is a client of our firm, and so unfortunately, I've had to not be involved in any PUC matters involving Kepco because of the fact that lawyers in my firm advise Kepco in matters that come before us. I don't advise Kepco directly because of the fact that I sit on the PUC, but I have to recuse myself from that. And that's, you know, that's, I regret that, because I, you know, it's an important issue, and I obviously want to contribute, but it's also important to avoid any conflict or even appearance of conflict, so I'm always careful to do that. And thankfully, it hasn't happened, other than Kepco, it hasn't really happened as much in the past couple of years where I've had to step away from an agenda item or a docket item, but it does happen from time to time. And it's really important that I'm strict about it, because it's, I have a professional responsibility, not only as a, you know, as a commissioner under the Government Ethics Code, but also as an attorney under the attorney professional rules to avoid any conflicts.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you for answering my second question with regards to the solar issue and what the PUC plays a part in. I guess we're just watching that as it unfolds. With the annual report that's required to the legislature, you know, to the governor as well as the speaker by the end of the year, does it reflect, Mike or even Fred, if you want to answer this, does it reflect any conflict of interest where members of the PUC have to step aside because of conflict? Is that included in the annual report when situations happen like this?
Mike, would you like me to answer that?
Sure.
Okay. No, not generally. It is reflected in our minutes. Of course, we have written minutes of every meeting that are posted electronically, and those reflect whenever a commissioner disqualifies himself or herself from a particular matter. The annual report does not. Basically, the annual report is a summary of the matters that we cover each year. I'm usually quite involved in the preparation of the annual report, and it just basically goes over each docket that we have covered and what were the main items discussed and decided. But in that presentation, we don't get down to the level of which commissioner was disqualified in any matter.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for that, Fred. Also, Fred, what funds the PUC? What funds your office, this office?
The PUC is funded by the utilities. So every year, the commission, normally in its September meeting before the start of the new fiscal year, prepares a budget. And we're talking now a budget for the administrative budget for the operations of the PUC. And basically, the PUC comes up with a budgeted amount, and then that is divided among each of the regulated entities. So let's say, for example, normally, the administrative budget is pretty set at around, I would say, $500,000 or so. And then that amount is divided up by the utilities, and there are now, I think, at least five utility groups. So the amount would be divided, and each, either utility, telecom is a group, so that for telecom, the amount is divided internally among the different companies. But generally, it runs probably somewhere from 90,000 to 100,000 per utility per year. That's the administrative budget. Then regulatory matters are handled in a different matter. Those are in the dockets where a utility brings a petition or a matter. Then the particular consultant working on that matter will submit a bill to the utility. That's called the regulatory budget. And there's, you know, that varies, of course, depending on the amount of work that the utilities require.
I see. Okay. I was always wondering about that. Of course, that has to be approved by the commission, you know, that budget.
Yes.
Okay, the commission scrutinized, and, okay, so it's about $500,000 that runs this agency.
Administrative portion to fund the PUC operations.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's my last question. And Mike, you know, I want to have my support, you know? I wish you the very best. My office is open, and I hope the same goes when I come knocking on your door as I've done in the past with any questions. But I continue to see the work that you're doing and ensuring that your work is in the best interest of the people of Guam. And I hope you keep at the forefront.
Thank you so much, Senator Titegwe. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, gentlemen. Merry Christmas to you.
Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you, Senator Titegwe. Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and certainly thank you to Mr. Pangolinan for once again stepping up to the plate to accept the renomination back to the PUC. I did want to ask currently, how many years have you served with the PUC now?
Good morning, Senator Brown. I've served now 12 years. This would be my third renomination.
And gosh, with all that, those years of experience, you're certainly seeing many petitions come before you, and certainly the time I was with the Port Authority, we were also there with regards to our bonds and our rate issues. Moving forward, though, with, how do you see things in terms of your role and what you can add or contribute, or perhaps even what you want to see improved? Is there anything with regards to the process of the work that the commissioners are doing? I mean, now, we certainly have the, you know, the adjustments are happening with the construction of a new power plant, and of course, rates are always coming before you to, in most cases, continued increases of rates. So with the wealth of years of experience that you've had, how do you see your role now? And is there more you'd like to shift or adjust moving forward with regards to your participation or even the direction of where the PUC is going now that you certainly have all that additional time and experience under your belt, so to speak?
Well, that's excellent question, Senator Brown. I definitely see my role as continuing to contribute in any way I can, of course. My, as Mr. Horecki pointed out earlier, my contributions tend to be focused on contract review and ways that I, we can find ways to accomplish goals of the utilities within the law, making sure that we're in compliance. One thing that's happened recently that really hasn't occurred throughout most of the time I've been on the PUC is our oversight over the Guam Solid Waste Authority. That's kind of, that's an agency that we have oversight over, which is now become, you know, it's no longer in receivership. It's now in a, it's trying to accomplish certain goals that have been put in place by this, by an audit that we had done last year by one of our consultants, where they looked at the solid waste authority's operations and tried to recommend ways that they can be self-sustaining and can continue their operations in an efficient way. And one of the things that I think is a big challenge that we're going to face that I've been thinking about a lot is whether or not Guam Solid Waste Authority should be a mandatory, in other words, trash collection should be mandatory, that everyone has to have it, you know, as a way to increase revenues and as a way to prevent sort of that, you know, the problems that we face with illegal dumping. But the challenge with that, and it's because it's, I'm fascinated by it because it's hard to accomplish a mandatory trash collection regime because the question of how to enforce it. How would you enforce that? I mean, with power and water, you know, everybody has to pay their power bill, otherwise they'll get cut off. They have no choice. And there's a mechanism to kind of compel people to pay their bills. How do you do that with trash collection where you, if a person doesn't want to sign up for service, but they're forced to? You know, if they don't sign up for service, what happens? You take away their trash can, but they don't want their trash can. So, I mean, there's no motivation to continue, and there's not much, and it's really hard to come up with a mechanism for enforcement. And that came up recently for us, and as we thought through it, you know, we're still in the process of trying to think about what, how do you do that? How do you actually accomplish that? But that's something that I think would improve, would improve the lives of people in Guam if we could find a way to kind of solve that issue. That's just an example. Things like that, when I focus on more challenging aspects that are kind of outside of the normal operation, but in ways that we can help improve people's lives in Guam.
Well, I certainly appreciate that response. I mean, one of the ways, actually, I think that that could be addressed is really regulatory, because Guam EPA has that ability, is, you know, making sure residents have verification of how they're addressing disposal of their waste, be it through the, you know, if they're not doing it directly through solid waste, and if they're, you know, taking it themselves to the transfer station, they've got to have a receipt to show that they have properly disposed of their waste, because we all generate it every day. So that's just another option to look at, because certainly I understand what you're saying. You know, we wish everyone was responsible in our community, but obviously, that's not the case. And on occasion, you know, we have to use regulatory enforcement to address compliance. But I appreciate your insight and the fact that you desire to continue to serve. I mean, there's only a select few, but over the years that have been able to sit on the PUC and essentially have a lot of that experience and know-how and have, you know, been there for a long time, and it looks like you're on track. uh experience and know-how and uh have have, you know, been there for a long time, and it looks like you're on track to doing exactly that. Uh, but that's beneficial, certainly, because you do have the history that you bring to the table and experience, and we definitely want those set of eyes looking and and making sure that even as we're addressing rate and addressing compliance, the department or agencies that you oversee uh, that is all ultimately in the best interest of the public, so thank you so much for your your continued service, and we wish you well on your your service and continued work that you're doing at the PUC, and certainly hi to Fred, I don't get to see him as often, but good to see you again, and happy holidays to all of you, and it's nice to have a pleasant hearing, we don't get to do that all the time, but at least we get to do it uh this morning with uh Mr. Pangolin's confirmation. So with that, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to ask questions and and receive responses, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Okay, Mr. Pangolin, uh first off, I'd like to uh thank you for all the hard work you've done, uh, I I'm sure you've spent many uh hours into uh into the Public Utilities Commission, uh, considering you've been uh on the Commission for um two terms, right, and now this would be your third term, is that correct?
That's right, Mr. Chairman.
So throughout your time, have you had any uh difficulty attending any of the PUC meetings since your initial appointment?
I have I've missed a few, um, Mr. Chairman, um, but most of the times, if I'm if I'm off island, um, I've actually tried to advocate to for to for a rule change that would allow me to attend virtually if I am off island, but it's something that hasn't been put in place yet. I think as a commission, we've generally met in person. And even all of our meetings have been in person, even through the pandemic, you know, we've taken great pains to kind of make that happen. But there are times when I'm off island, um, and I can't attend. But uh, and if if there's a very, very important matter, um, you know, where there's a scheduling conflict, then um I'll, you know, I'll have to not attend, but I I do check in to make sure that we have a quorum and that my if I don't attend, it's not going to affect, you know, the outcome or prevent the PUC from functioning. But generally speaking, um, I, you know, I attend almost every meeting.
Okay. Could you explain uh what roles the administrative law judge plays when a docket is established for any of the entities under the PUC's regulation?
Well, administrative law judge um manages the docket. And depending on the nature of the request, uh, the administrative law judge will will do the initial review, um, will request information from the parties presenting and and um do an initial analysis, if the if there needs to be advice from a consultant, the administrative law judge can take input from the consultant, if it's a docket matter that requires um public comment, the administrative law judge will set up um dates and locations of public hearings and conduct the public hearings, uh, so that public can show up and give comment on a matter. And then eventually generate a report, um, an ALJ report that goes to the commissioners with their recommendation um for for uh, you know, a decision on a matter that you're aware of. So it's, it kind of depends on the docket as to the details of how that process works out, but it's generally administrative law judge handles the review and the analysis, um, and and provides a recommendation, and then asks the commissioners to take action at a meeting.
So aside from uh this sort of uh recommendation from the administrative law judges, do the commissioners receive any briefings from staff on dockets before uh, the commission um has a monthly meeting?
Yes, the commission receives it can be an administrative law judge report, and at times, um, sometimes it'll be a legal counsel report. We have, um, you know, like, as I mentioned, a good team of lawyers, the three attorneys and ALJs that we have on our staff, um, provides a report a few days before, at least a few days before the upcoming meeting. Any item that is on the agenda will be put into a binder of material that that we have to review to prepare for the the meeting. We get the agenda you know, maybe a week or two before the meeting, so that we know what's coming, and then we get the binder of all the material that's been submitted a few days before the meeting, because sometimes material is submitted, especially if it's an urgent matter, it may be submitted a little bit close to the hearing, so they they don't they they want to give us the most up-to-date information before they before the the meeting.
Okay. In the five years you've sat as a commissioner, I'm sorry, five, it's more than five years, right, does any procedure, policy, or practice stand out as needing improvement in your mind or expansion of any procedure or policy or practice?
Well, that's an excellent question, I as I mentioned it earlier, I think that as we get, as we've learned sort of through the COVID pandemic, you know, it's really important to be able to function. Um, even if you cannot be physically in one place together, all all commissioners, so I personally feel that it would be a good idea to have a rule change that adds the um possibility of virtual meetings, um, so that not so much because we can't meet um, because you know, we need it in order to actually have our meetings, but just so that all commissioners can always participate, because there are times when we travel, not only for work, but also even for training, and cannot always be at a meeting, and it would be better to have as many commissioners as possible to attend, just to get more input, so if we could implement a a process that allows remote um attendance at meetings, I think that that would be an improvement.
Okay. What attributes would you recommend an appointee possess to make them an effective commissioner?
Well, I think that it would, it helps to have, to be a part of the community, either you know, have some experience as in business or in with a government agency. Um, and and to have been familiar familiar with sort of how business and um and commercial activity and in government works on Guam, so if you're brand new to Guam and you're not familiar with how how anything, things operate here, I think that that would be a a drawback, I think it should be somebody who's who's in the business community or in the um, or is part of the government, um, has some government experience, that those, that would be one sort of background um attribute. But I also think that just somebody that has um some patience and and is not so um doesn't have a difficulty dealing with people or dealing with difficult issues. Um, somebody that has, is reasonable and rational, because I think that because the, with the amount of information that we have to um process, you know, sometimes really the answer is just what's the right thing to do in this situation? And even with all the technical information you have, you still have to make sure you come out with a fair result. So if you're too lost in the details and you're not looking at the big picture, then I think that that's um, you know, that's going to get in your way, so somebody that has a level head, rational um, has some, has experience in business or in in government. And I think that those are important um aspects and important attributes to have as a commissioner.
You mentioned the technical details and uh, you know, you're dealing with utilities uh, that have highly technical reports, so to speak, when they're making presentations. Uh, even if they think that they're putting it in layman's terms as best as possible, do you find it difficult sometimes to digest all the information that they're submitting to the commission?
I do find it difficult. I um I try to read all of the documents that are submitted. But what I focus on the most is the reports that are sort of digested in advance by the ALJs and the legal and our legal counsel, and so what you know, they always submit us a summary, submit to us a summary and an analysis that they've done, where they've kind of tried to look through some of the, you know, the volumes of information and pull out the most important elements and the things that are actually most relevant to our decision. And so then they submit that along with the volume of material, on top of it, you'll see their summaries and you'll see um, that are with citations to the places that we need to look and focus on, so so as difficult as it is to digest, it definitely helpful um to have a team of people that helps you do that, and that's, you know, that's why I appreciate our ALJs so much and and rely on them a lot.
Okay. Um, according to your, the packet you submitted, it looks like your last uh ethics and government training was in twenty fifteen, is that correct?
Yes, unfortunately, it's been, has been a few years.
If so, I believe the law requires a a refresher course by now, I think your refresher course is probably due in twenty nineteen.
I apologize for that, Mr. Chairman, I um realized that I was due for a refresher, I had uh wasn't aware of the requirement, that's no excuse, I mean, but um, you know, that how how often I had to have it done. You know, time flies, uh, two thousand fifteen is kind of a long time ago, but it doesn't seem like, it feels like I just took that course recently, but I will sign up for the next time it's offered and make sure I get that, get that uh requirement satisfied.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just want to make sure that you're up to date with the ethics and government training. Um Okay. I would like to point out a couple of things, uh beginning with the Public Utilities Commission's Enabling Legislation. So in the Enabling Legislation, excuse me, Enabling uh Law, it's a twelve GCA, chapter twelve, uh, that's section one two, one oh two point one, Rate Payers' Bill of Rights. And I'm going to read from B. Now, in B, it says, while the letteratur in Guahan recognizes that over a long period of time an increase in utility rates is inevitable. Such rate increases must be made out of absolute necessity and only after every cost-cutting effort has been made and every other available option has been exhausted. So with that in mind, my question for you as a commissioner, uh, do you believe that you guys have been able to satisfy that section of the law that requires that rate increases are only made out of absolute necessity and only after every cost-cutting effort has been made and every other available option has been exhausted?
Mr. Chairman, I do believe that we have satisfied that, I think that we take any rate increase very seriously, and and we definitely don't want to increase rates or approve rate increases. I think that we always spend a lot of time um reviewing any request for a rate increase that and think and factor in all of the the possible impact and and try to find ways around it, we've looked for other options of to, if if it's a, if it's a revenue issue, because there needs to be something funded for to for a capital improvement project or to keep the utility infrastructure equipment running properly or to satisfy, you know, a court order or 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 legislation or laws that require utilities to convert their their generation to different types of energy sources. There's a lot of requirements that have to be met that have to be funded. And there's, there needs to be revenue to fund it, and so we've we always look for all the different possibilities, whether we can take it from their, you know, the utilities' insurance money and apply that to offset the cost so that we don't have to do a rate increase, we've considered you know, whether or not to even raise the, you know, the the LEAC rate. You know, if we have to if we, the impact that it has on on consumers sometimes prevents us from from raising rates that really need to be raised because we don't want to negatively affect, um, you know, and affect ratepayers, we've definitely not, we've resisted the um request to raise rates at times when we just feel that there's it's just too much of an impact, even if it's absolutely necessary. So it's just, you know, we we take it case by case, but every time that I've voted on uh rate increase, I've always come to the conclusion in my own mind that there is no other option, and that we have explored all other available um alternatives before I would, I would vote in favor of it.
And then, you know, of course, the reason I ask that is, uh, you know, our office, and I'm sure many other senators' offices field a lot of uh complaints about utility rates in general, um. Of course, the most recent rate increases are to Guam Power Authority, so we have constituents coming to our office um complaining about their power bill. And uh, sometimes they think that they're being improperly billed. Um, but I think most of the time, they just don't realize that the rates were increased, so a lot of times we end up telling them uh, we even look at all their paperwork and help them sort of sort through it, and we end up telling them um, no, sir, uh, your rates went up, that's why you're paying more, because a lot of times they come and they say, oh, I used to pay this last year, last, for the last several years I've been paying this, why am I paying this now? And we have to tell them, you know, the rates went up. And, you know, I'm sure you're well aware of the strain that the utility rates have put on the community and how it not only impacts individual ratepayers, but it impacts the community as a whole, it impacts the economy as a whole. And in fact, this is pretty much recognized in the Enabling Act for the PUC, there's other sections here that talk about how, you know, residents have very little choice in purchasing these basic necessities. They are held captive to the rates and rate increases of the public utilities. Any rate increase therefore diminishes the amount of hard-earned wages residents have to spend on other basic necessities such as food, shelter, and clothing, as well as the amount of hard-earned wages they have to set aside for retirement, college, emergencies, or family business. This is in the Enabling Act for the PUC, so this is something that was thought about uh many years ago uh in this act, and it's something I think that we're seeing happening now with uh high utility rates. Um, they're much higher than they were when this act was enacted. I think this was in two thousand four, if I'm not mistaken, and I'm sure if I look at what the rates were back in two thousand four and what the average household was paying was probably a lot less, I remember it being a lot less. So the reason I bring all this up is because this is one of the primary responsibilities of the PUC. And I just want to be sure that uh you are aware of the importance, and you've stated that you are, but I guess I just want to reiterate the importance of really, really thinking about the ratepayers. So I know it's, you have a lot to balance and a lot to weigh, you have utilities, agencies that come before you, and of course, they're requesting for rate increases because they they'll make presentations that are highly technical, oftentimes, saying why they need to increase rates uh for various reasons. Um, and I'm sure they essentially try to say that they need to increase the rates in order to stay afloat, in order to keep an operation. Um, but I just want to be sure that you think about the ratepayers first and foremost every time you make these decisions, because we have reached a point now where I think it is becoming extremely difficult for people to keep up with the rates for their utilities. And as is pointed out here in the Enabling Act, uh, this diminishes the amount of money they have to spend on other things, which in turns impacts the economy locally, because as you're, I'm sure you're well aware, if people have less uh money to spend on other things, and they're not going out and spending it in in the economy, and then local businesses and supporting local businesses here on Guam. And it also, of course, affects each business on Guam, because uh each business on Guam also has to pay their own power and water utilities. And I've heard from many different businesses over the years about the difficulty they have in paying their power and water bills and how uh when water rates and power rates increase, they often have no choice but to pass that increase onto their customers by increasing their prices of their products and services. So I just wanted to really highlight that and just really drive that message home, that I hope you're, you keep that in mind every time you think about rates and that you scrutinize to the best of your ability any request for rate increases, uh, as well as any contracts that come before you, um that the utilities are looking to have approved by the PUC. Uh, because contracts result in costs, so is the cost of that contract going to increase the cost to ratepayers? Now, those are things I really, really hope that the commission takes extremely seriously, and I hope you guys will look at that. And it does lead me to a, my next point, which is of a little bit of a concern, uh, that I'm glad you addressed openly and honestly earlier in this meeting, uh, in this hearing, excuse me, was that um you've had to recuse yourself um from decisions dealing with Kepco. Uh, now, Kepco are, they have major contracts, so the the discussion we were having in this hearing earlier focused primarily on the solar contract, however, uh, Kepco, that's not the only contract Kepco has uh with the Guam Power Authority. In fact, they have a much larger contract, as I'm sure you're aware, which is the Ukuru uh baseload generation. And of course, they're now looking to have another generator built down in Cabras as a part of that contract, uh, which uh is huge. is huge. And I believe if all these things are built, Kepco will be the single largest private power producer for the Guam Power Authority. In fact, I think they'll be producing roughly half of the utilities capacity for power generation, if not more. I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head right now, but last time I looked at it, it's about half and they'll be the largest power producer. So when you're having to recuse yourself from any decision making involving what is going to be or what is currently the largest private power producer for the Guam Power Authority, that is of concern. Because that means you're not able to weigh in on any of those decisions and you're not able to, as I mentioned earlier, consider the rate payer first when the Utilities Commission is approving of these contracts because you can't even vote on the approval of that contract for Kepco. So you've had to take yourself out of that and leave it up to other commissioners. So that is of some concern to me. What are your thoughts on that? How has that affected your ability to be a commissioner with the relationship your law firm has with Kepco?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand the concern and because it is a concern, because there is, it's inappropriate for me to serve on the commission and make decisions and have input onto a matter that involves a client that lawyers in our firm are advising. So for that reason, it's just, it's important that I not participate in that and that I rely upon the other six commissioners to, you know, to make the decisions and to weigh the, you know, the the rate pairs, the impact on rate pairs. As you've, as you've definitely clearly pointed out and very well pointed out, which I completely agree with. And I I agree with everything you said about how important it is to consider the impact that that these rates that any sort of rate changes have on rate pairs. So that's, that is the most important, most most important concern, most important function. But for purposes of of the Kepco issue, you know, there's just no, it's totally inappropriate for me to be involved in that. You know, simply, but going back to the question about, you know, the ethics and government. I mean, that's one of the fundamental rules of ethics and government is that you don't involve yourself in a decision in a in an issue where you might, you know, you have some other sort of interest. And so if my law firm is advising a company for us, before the commission, then I definitely should not be involved in and and providing any input. But I don't think that impacts my ability to function as a commissioner. Yes, maybe on that, on that issue. And yes, you're right, it's absolutely, it's a major issue. It's a big, important item that the P U C is dealing with right now. So I am sort of not act, not active and not available on that issue. But there are plenty of other way, other issues on the dock and other issues that come before the commission that I can contribute in. And I, so I don't think that that eliminates my value, although it does eliminate my input on that important issue.
Would you be able to vote on a request for a baseload base rate increase, considering that the largest baseload generator once completed, the Ukuru Power Plant will be owned by Kepco, a company that you'd have to recuse yourself from. I I'm not sure how that would affect that. Is that something you would see that you wouldn't be able to vote on because it's a base rate increase caused by perhaps the cost of baseload generation by the Kepco Power Plant?
Well, you know, on that issue, I would probably ask for some input from our legal counsel, just to tell me what sort of advice they have on that. I, the way I look at my recusals is that if the entity that my law firm represents is not coming before us for any request, they don't have any pending issue, they're not involved in asking for any change or any sort of relief from the P U C that I generally don't recuse myself unless the entity is actually a petitioner or involved in a request. So the fact that there may be an entity that now operates the generate, your generation facility, I don't believe that that disqualifies me from having any input on rates going forward because of that, because of there, yes, yes, there is going to be some, they are affected by it, that, you know, Kepco is affected by it. But I don't think that the fact that that they're that the operating the generators, generation facilities is going to disqualify me from any further rate involvement.
Okay, thank you. Well, I appreciate your time this morning, Mr. Pangolin, and thank you for answering the questions. Thank you for appearing before us today. And I'd like to thank my colleagues as well and and thank you, Mr. Pangolin, for, as my, some of my colleagues stated earlier, for stepping up to the plate, so to speak, for serving on the commission. And I appreciate your comments this morning and your testimony this morning. And I just again ask you, as I said earlier, but I will keep reiterating it as many times they can, to please think about the rate payers whenever you're making these decisions. With that, if there are no other comments from any of my other colleagues or any closing comment that you would like to make, Mr. Pangolin, and you can do so at this time.
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to thank you again for asking the tough questions and and focusing on rate payers and the concerns of the public and protecting the people of Guam, which I also share your concerns and definitely will keep in mind everything that you said going forward. I want to thank Senator Ada, Senator Brown, Senator Tidigui for for your participation and for your support as well. Thank you, Mr. Heraki, too, for for your support and for everything you you've done for the commission. Thank you all. Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Pangolin. If there are no further questions or comments, this will conclude our discussion on the appointment of Mr. Pangolin to the Public Utilities Commission. We will recess for five minutes before we proceed with discussions on the appointment of Mr. Al Edric Lebang as a youth member of the Board of Directors of the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency. And yes, Merry Christmas, everyone, and happy holidays and have a happy new year if I don't speak to you again.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Hafaday, good morning. This virtual public hearing will now reconvene for the committee to hear and accept testimony on the appointment of Mr. Al Edric Lebang as youth member of the Board of Directors of the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency. And we'll begin by some testimony that I will read into the record from the Director of the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities, Sandra Flores. Good morning, Senator Brown. Good morning, Mr. Lebang. I apologize. Good morning to you both. Good morning, Senator Tidigui. All right, I'll begin now by reading a testimony provided by Sandra Flores, Director of Guam Council and Arts and Humanities. She apologizes. She was online with us earlier this morning. Because of the length of the first hearing, she wasn't able to stay online for this hearing. She has something else that she has to attend to at this time. So I will go ahead and read her testimony into the record. Hafaday, this is Sandra Flores, Director of the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities. I would appreciate the statement being presented at the Legislative Confirmation Hearing for Mr. Lebang as Youth Representative for Guam Caja Board of Directors. Guam Caja, as our government arts agency, is mandated to provide art, the promotion of art and opportunities to appreciate art to our community. As such, we welcome a youth representative such as Mr. Lebang to bring us the perspective of the younger community. In looking at Mr. Lebang's biography and accomplishments, I am especially excited to welcome this appointment. Mr. Lebang has shown himself to be a leader in the youth congress as the Vice Speaker. He has worked in Washington as a legislative aide. This, I believe, gives him an appreciation of the federal support that Caja receives and perhaps a better understanding of our vital partnership with the federal government. Mr. Lebang is also studying to become a teacher. I am impressed by this commitment to the future of our young people. In summary, I believe Mr. Lebang's history and accomplishments, as well as his current area of study will be assets to the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities Board, and I welcome his confirmation. Okay, now, again, that was testimony provided by the Director of Caja, Sandra Flores. And at this time, I'll call upon the nominee, Mr. Lebang, to provide his testimony. Good morning, Mr. Lebang. You may proceed.
Lieutenant Hafaday, Senator Joe, and members of the three six four nation. I am Al Lebang, an immigrant from the Philippines who have lived for Guam, who lived in Guam for the past twelve years. Our Guam community has adopted my family and I and has provided me with many opportunities that I could never have imagined. Guam will always have a special place in my heart and I'm committed to doing anything to serve our island. I have been elected to the Guam Congress for the last six years where I represent and serve the youth of our island. Being appointed to the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency Board is another opportunity to reciprocate the good bill and embrace our local community that has given my family and I. I would like to thank Governor Lili Anguero and Lieutenant Governor Josh Tenorio for the opportunity to serve our people and the youth of our island on the Caja Board. As a board member for the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency, I can to represent the youth of our island and promote youth artists who wish to preserve Guam's culture and heritage for the future to come. As part of the board, I will offer the youth of our island a voice in the Caja Board and reach out to the youth artists who promote their works and help them in their artistic trainings. As part of the board, I will bring the unique perspective offered by the youth in making decision for the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities. As future teachers, as future teacher of this island, I wish to inspire the future of our added, the youth, to not be afraid to show their talents, not only in our island, but also around the world. Senators, I humbly ask in respectfully, ask for your support for my vocation to serve my adopted island, which provided me with plenty of opportunities in life. I look forward for the legislative favorable decision and I'm ready to serve wherever I needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lebang. At this time, I'll open it up to my colleagues to ask questions or make any comments or ask any questions they may have. Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Certainly appreciate Mr. Lebang accepting an appointment, certainly his very young age and wanting to serve. And of course, appropriate because he's a position he'll be serving as as a youth member to the board. But I wanted to ask him in terms of his own creativity, what what made him interested in wanting to serve on this board? Is he artistic by nature? What would, certainly, Mr. Lebang, what what would you like to see as your contribution with regards to our 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 council and the arts and humanities here on Guam? Do you think you can add to the table beyond just your youthful energy that you're going to bring and perhaps insight? Are you yourself artistic? Is there more that you would like to see improved for our community here? I'm going to get your thoughts on that.
Thank you for that, Senator. So in terms of that, I'm not really a singer or dancer, but I like vlogging. So I do certain blogs and I wish to promote that here on our island as well. And that is something that I think the new artist is like, you know, showing people through videos, through YouTube and everything, like through social media around your island.